Okay, six o'clock. Just a quick reminder, cell phones, you can turn them off, the side chatter back there, keep them minimal if you're here, if you would just sign the attendance sheet before you leave or now, it would be appreciated, so we could be kept track of. That said, all right, we will open up the public hearing regarding the local referendum on the Yeah, so there will be one local question presented as a referendum on November 8th. That question reads to see if the town will vote to authorize the purchase of real property located on Gilman Drive in Norwood being a two and a half acre portion of tax, tax map twenty eight, lot six dash two dash two for price not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. And on such further terms and conditions is the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town and to appropriate up to one hundred thousand dollars of coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the American Rescue Plan Act or ARCA funds received by the town from the federal government for the same. That is a lengthy way to ask if the townspeople would purchase two and a half acres with a three car garage on Gilman Drive for the purposes of establishing a food pantry for the town of Norwood. The asking price is ninety seven thousand, it is currently under purchase and sales. For about two years now, the town has been without a food pantry, it was privately run before now. And then it's been non-existent, folks in Norwood have been utilizing, the people who care, food cupboard in Madison. There are large numbers, we have data that's been provided to us from that. And if we look long term, if the property was approved for acquisition, the building, the three car garage with a drill, well, there is not a separate home site, would then be worked, converted into a working pantry, that would then be held, uh, run by a five oh one C three, that's the nonprofit status. The access to benefits are offered through partnerships like Good Shepherd Food Bank. Among others, it'll also enhance the ability for corporate partners to give if they would like. And then the, the town would serve as a facilitator of transitioning into that nonprofit goal. In our ideal world, in any world, it would be staffed by volunteers with minimal administrative assistance from the town. Looking into the numbers of it, the acquisition price is ninety seven thousand. Budgetary, very conservative budgetary numbers for facility improvements and AD modifications, twenty five thousand. Septic installation, twenty five thousand, showing in food storage, thirty thousand, and ongoing support for the organization from the town perspective, fifteen thousand dollars per year, plus or minus. And then in kind support of property facility maintenance being something the building needs to repair or road maintenance, planning for what
That's significantly higher than our last meeting, that's like eighty thousand dollars to get it ready to open on top of the price.
I overinflated these numbers, so that the public was well aware, what we talked about the last meeting was the whole number. What taxpayers should be prepared to fund if everything goes poorly. So these have been the numbers we've been dealing with. I inflated in order to say this is what is realistic, what we need to do. The last thing we want to do is undersell what would be required. So what I just kind of breezed over is in the double sided document, which is available on the table, it's available on townofnorwood.com. And also the front counter, on the front you have that sheet on the back, you have a photo of building on the property. And then you have the overview tax map replaces it across the street from the elementary. You got any notes on that? Also take comment and question and answer all the reasons if we have the ability to ask them. We'll open it up for, open it up. Anything from the public?
Yeah, David Jones, I get all kinds of questions. You might know all along.
Fire away.
I was told the fire station to calm down, so I don't know.
Nice.
I'll do my best. Number one, how are you gonna get a tractor trailer in that road? Can't turn him around, so you gotta try to back him on route two.
Well, I can't speak for every driver, the idea when he would pull in and then back, he would drive down the road and then back in.
Okay, back out on the route two.
No, no, he wouldn't, he wouldn't, he would pull it and back into our yard, the property has a fairly significant area as well as adding enough room for that shop to turn around, right, and I think. Pull down the road, tractor trailer back in, and then pull up, that was a good tension.
Where now?
Yeah, I may retain the property directly in front of it, so I'm pretty familiar with that property.
You know, you deal with it.
Yeah, I do, yes, yes.
I'm glad you do, well, I wouldn't, but that's my fault. I think you put, I'd rather she had taken a hundred thousand, walked into Wilder Hill. Route two, you get a nice level lot, have cemetery that you can't use for cemetery. You've got water there, great place to put a septic in, build your own building, you own that property. Why get into something like this and you don't even own it? I mean, you're gonna own it, but it's the last place in the world, I think. You've got a great piece, build your own building, it's not something that somebody else built, it's twenty years old or whatever it is. You know, it just makes sense, you know, it's not up to me, but I wouldn't, you know, I'd be the last place I'd go or deal with or whatever. Should be, think about building on, you've got a great site, you can't beat that piece out there. You got water right up there, sandy soil, put a septic in without no big deal. And, you know, accessible route to, you got a path to park it down, don't have to fight with the owner. That's gonna be a big problem, say what you want. Do what you want, that's my thing, it's the condensed version.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else?
I'll say a little bit.
Jeff, Jeff.
I kind of back in, whereas I would rather build something to be proud of than hide in the woods. Even if it costs more money, who cares, there's no shortage of money in that. Build something you can be proud of, you can see, oh, that's Norwood School, not, oh, it's down there, down there, three hundred yard driveway. It just, I would rather see, I think it's kind of sneaky, put it on the ballot in two weeks. And this seems kind of southern to me, in a kind of a shady way to go about it, I think it should have had more discussion than never I did, no matter what, it goes on the ballot now, and if it's voted, then you're gonna go with the board's wishes, which you should. But I feel like they're kind of being, they're not seeing the whole picture. You kind of needed, it's gonna be more expensive than this, I mean, the driveway isn't in there, maintenance is in there, hall in there, you know how it is. Who can't have cost two hundred thousand building, there's no shortage of donors for food cupboard. You kidding me? What better place than the donation booth there in the building? That is, that's it.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm against the food cupboard, I'm for it.
Anything else?
Okay. Um, I have an issue buying the building to lease it out to a nonprofit organization. I am not against a food cupboard, I just don't think it's, the town should spend town money to then open it up and lease it to a nonprofit for a dollar. Because you're not doing that equally for any other nonprofit. I still like what Lindsay was saying. The Grange is a central location, a hundred eighty thousand dollars, what a great investment that would be, I, I don't know what the hangup is for the Grange. You know, maybe there's stuff I don't know, legalities, I, I'm not sure, but that seems like a central location. Easy in, easy out. That's just my view.
All right, thank you. Please.
Mary Ann Anderson, I went down and looked, because I, I had no idea where the property was or what the getting in and out was. And my first thought was, wow, this is a really narrow road to drive a tractor trailer down and to turn around in, because there's a whole bunch of trees on the side before you get to the garage. And then there's a small place to drive in and back out. And so, road maintenance, widening that road, making it more accessible. Driving in and out, it just, to me, that's an added ongoing cost to the town, whether you lease it or not, for a buck, which I understand that. And the Grange, you know, it could, and, and I know there's issues with people thinking over the Grange, because it's the Grange and part of, being part of the Grange, and no one wants to see it in the Grange, or being part of a church, or anything like that, so having a a private building is more attractive to some of the select people and some of the townspeople. Everyone knows you're gonna be, know who goes to the food cupboard or not, you see them drive in and out. It's not like having it on Wilder Hill Road or at the Grange, there's going to be any more privacy. It, to me, this just seems, and I gotta agree with you, this just seems like bang, bang, bang. Here this is, here's this absorbing cost, we might get some grants, grants aren't a sure thing. It just seems to me there needs to be a little more thought and planning into a project at this scope.
Well, thank you. Any, you have again.
I, I'd like to see you not put it on the back, on the question, I would just see you take it to town meeting, have a good public hearing that everybody knows about, not just see it on Facebook. And let us shoot the ball and discuss it at town meeting. You've got a bunch of people there that know what's going, they will know what's going on when they vote. Right now, they go with a vote November, they're just gonna check the box, they really don't even know what they're voting for. Or food cupboard, right thing, they don't know where it is, they haven't got a clue. And I don't know how many, how many universities been here, any of you guys been down there?
Yeah.
What do you think of it?
I mean, I kind of expressed last time, I don't know, I, I don't think it's a good spot, I was pretty clear about that, I, I I'm hearing they can get a tractor trailer in there, I don't even know if I'd want to back my horse trailer into there, I, I think that we're just, it's this or nothing, I just like
It's a one way, one, one way road, so you, you meet somebody in a spring, somebody's gonna be stopped. I mean, it's just not, I don't think it's the right place.
Well, I'm with you Dave. With doubts about who we might be dealing with. And that is a private word, I hope everybody knows that.
Tiny, very tiny. I, I've expressed this before too, like, I'm not against food cupboard, I think that we should have one. I just always like the idea of getting as much bang for a buck as we can get, whether it's, you know, I brought the Grange, that might not be the right fit, but I know that waters wanted to do a new building, like, so, I don't know why it has to be On my order?
Yep, sorry.
So I'm not public?
Correct, well, no, different.
Okay, so if there are future buildings that need to be built that we know might be on the docket, that might be something to add it into, especially if there are gonna be places where there are gonna be employees that were already there, I ju, I just think that there's a better way to do this and have it make more sense, I feel like this is a little bit rushed and we haven't explored enough options for it, that's, that's where I'm at with this one.
And again, I think that maybe the town should have an option. Maybe you guys should pull back and say, whoa, you know, we hear just these select few that have issues. And maybe we can take a month and discover different options and then bring it to the town and say, you know, we've done our homework, we're not set in stone on this one place, on this private way and, you know, all the different things. It's a good cause. But again, I've heard you say in meetings that you don't want to support a nonprofit organization, you don't want to put money towards individual organizations, so why is the town picking this up when we have one in Madison? Why are we taking away from that and not giving into that? Or Skowhegan, or, again, I don't know the technicalities, I meeting information.
Yeah, so what we, what is in this document that's been made available to the public has to be neutral, and I'm not providing data or anything to support one way or another. Candidly, if you see data, you're probably gonna be horrified if the data is coming out of our community. But we can't use this as a document in order to persuade voters, it just has to be strictly informational. The, the impetus for us moving on this, it, it's been public for about four weeks now, which is what was required in terms of being able to negotiate sales price and purchase and sales and things like that. And then it was that next meeting where it became public to put before the voters. One of the biggest reasons why is that the organization that has been primarily serving our residents since we've not had a food pantry, has sent us a big ask for the two hundred and fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year. To send to another town and still have our residents a lot of them who see obstacles to food access already, we're asking them to drive twenty minutes, one way it will get food. So those are sort of the obstacles, we applied for a grant through Good Shepherd. It was a hundred thousand dollar grant, we're hoping to get some of it, that didn't happen. And so we've been seeking opportunities, we have five, uh, ten thousand available right now to us, New Balance has already committed. We have an application to the New Balance Foundation for an additional forty thousand, but none of that is here and ready. And so that's a lot of what's been moving. We've been working on grants, we've been working with Good Shepherd to try to make this happen, to make it something that, you know, Wilder Hill seems like it's close to town, but it depends on where you are, and the location here, while it's on the side road, it's provides walkability. And that's one of the bigger goals of any mission that we do, is walkability, and when you're at the school, and it's all sidewalk accessible. And so that point of location when it came up, kind of came to, and, and the price on it, it's easy to say, okay, well, it's, it's a hundred thousand dollars. But when the town looks up a building, we know it's more expensive to do it as a town than it is to do it privately. And when we hit that hundred thousand dollar threshold for project, we have to employ an engineer. So you can easily then take about fifteen or twenty percent easily and add it on top. So in the last meeting, it was mentioned by a member that this is at least an investment, and it might not be the perfect long-term solution, but provides us with an opportunity and investment and asset of the town's, rather than just throwing money. So.
Why was the grant denied, or what was the hundred thousand dollar grant? What was that for, and why was it denied?
So the, the program itself is looking for different things, it covered all of Somerset County, I don't have the exact reasons as to why. One of the things was the five oh one C three status, and we weren't turnkey, we need to have a five oh one C three status in order to be able to partner with Good Shepherd, so Good Shepherd was obviously hesitant of that. That was really the large motivator as to why the whole amount wouldn't have been approved. And then they're also looking for things that are groundbreaking, if you will, not just a food pantry, but something that might modernize the way that we're bridging the food gap, and for people of all ages, so we just have that need, it's here, it's defined, but we weren't looking necessarily to blaze trails in terms of what we were doing or how we would do it. We were looking to meet a basic need for the most affordable way possible. Please, go ahead, Laura.
So what I'm hearing from the, from everybody is that, I'm working, if you don't know who I am, anyway. I live here in town, I was the school nutrition director in our school district for a number of years. What I'm hearing from the town is that people think that it's a good idea to do something for all of our residents that are food insecure, whether they're infants or they're a hundred years old. And as Rich alluded to, the information and the statistics are staggering. You know, for most of us, we've never had to live with that food insecurity. We have a large community in Norwood that live on a fixed income of less than fifteen hundred dollars a month. With that money, they're paying for heat and housing and, and on and on and on, and you all know that, you don't need me to tell you that. But my concern is that we're not moving quick enough to help these people, winter's coming, I mean, we've all been starting to winterize. And I really worry about what's gonna happen to, especially our older population during the winter months. And our working poor, I mean, I've heard so many people say to me, my, somebody being one of them, that people are gonna take advantage of this, well, we have a huge amount of working poor in our town. They work for a minimum amount of money every week. And they're, they have to choose, I have friends that have to choose. Am I gonna feed my family, or am I going to put gas in my car, or oil in my tank? So I hear what everybody's saying about it's not the perfect place, I hear that. But it's at least a place to start, to get us up and running. Some of these people can't go to Madison, they don't ever leave Norwood. Because they don't have the, the ability to do that, they don't have transportation. Have anybody, if you watch the K V cat buses and where they stop, that's telling. That's not a tone test. So I just wanna, I just wanna encourage us to think about here is one, two oh five Rock Hill Road in Norwood, the horse stable, again, two zero five Rock Hill Road in Norwood. The caller's applying that her vehicle was on fire, they were able to get the fire out, not sure how or why it started on fire. So I'll take someone to checkout, make sure it's not going to ignite.
Cars go fast, not as fast as chip trucks though. Those things go fast.
So I encourage us to think about starting now. At least get started, do something to provide for our community now. And then we can take time to look at what the future is. Can we do, can we do something like Kerry was doing over at the church? In, in the meantime, I mean, to address it real time now. This is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's not just pocket lint in my pocket, I mean, that's a huge amount. Great cause, but kind of shoot yourself in the foot, if this isn't where it needs to be, and it's I don't know what the town implication is for a private road as opposed to a public road, I, I don't know what that plays into, but obviously there's a need. So I think it would be responsible of the board to rethink what you've decided already and maybe pull back and just take a, a broader look. Are you talking about when we first did meals at church? Yeah, that's different than the food cupboard, okay, but you're saying real time, we, this winter is coming, we have people who need it now.
Well, yes, well, let's keep it all right here, I, nothing in between, we're gonna, Dave, go ahead, yes.
I think it's a great idea, and I think we need one, but I don't think if you buy this piece of pump, it's gonna happen this winter. You ain't got time to get a septic in and everything all going in the month of November and have it ready to go. I think, to me, I'd rather see you put this off, put an option for the Wilder Hill site, and bring it to town meeting, two options, and do it then, if you have to give money to Madison Food Company to feed people this winter, do it, I mean, we're not broke, we got money, we can do it. But, you know, come up with two options, one, on the land we own already, and accessible tractor trailer, make a nice route off, route two off of Wilder Hill, rather than having come off route two. They can even off Wilder Hill, you know, and it's not like they're gonna be pulling out into route two by the end of school, they can come right in to Wilder Hill like we all do now, and you can see both ways, and no, not the two options, no, I don't see how you're gonna buy this November eighth, or whatever the thing is, and get that thing out and going, it'll be, you can't do it, I don't know if it's even finished inside, is it?
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah, it's, it's like
But you gotta put a lot, you've got a lot of work to do before cold weather, cold weather's here.
If you were trying to do all that, yeah, that would be a lot.
Not gonna do it, you know, in time you put out the bid, do anything else. Once you come up with two options, bring it back to town meeting for us, where we can get up and you can say what you want, I can say what I want, Lindsay can say what she wants, and, no. Go that way, feed, you know, feed the people somewhere else, you're not gonna do it here anyways, this year. So, no, not saying they don't need food, I mean, if they do, no, take care of it.
Right, thank you, Dave.
So, I have a question, the, where people have been getting food, like, I know, I think it's like one on like Thursdays at the church that's close to my house, like, they get food there, if that's always kind of been a spot where people go to get food, have we even looked at exploring like some sort of an arrangement with the church as far as like the building, I mean, it's a huge space, and I don't I mean, I don't, I mean, I think Charlotte, you must know, like, how many, is that something, I mean, the building's there, could the stuff get put in there, people already go there for food, I mean, it's a good, that's a walkable location, tractor trailer truck can get in and out easily. I mean, have we even explored that at all, I know that there's like the, we don't want church in this, but like, I feel like there could be some sort of arrangement, I mean, it's a building that could be up and running this winter. I'm guessing that there's church volunteers that might be around, right, because they're already doing it. It just seems like that would be a significantly less expensive place to put that now.
The, excuse me, the church is not handling that federal food distribution, we just allow those people to use the church in the parking lot.
I mean, is that something that we've even approached, I mean, that, that building is a really great location for something like that, it's kind of tucked off, tractor trailer accessibility, you know, it seems like that, it's, we're looking for as fast as we can get people in there, that could be
Thing, thing is, the building needs to you can't have a church on Sunday and have it be a food cupboard the rest of the time.
Well, that church is like, there's kitchen on one side, and there's like a whole thing on the other, like it's
If you want to take, we'll take you back to the, anything else from the public on this, I, let's see, skip, please.
Yeah, Skip boss, I, I'm just curious, do most of our people go to the Madison Food Company, or do they go to the Scowhegan?
Go to the Madison Food Company.
Okay, has anybody approached the Madison Food Company? Cause they, I'm sure, get their food by numbers of people that come to the food company. And, you know, we might actually be hurting them by doing this.
I, I'm gonna walk this line very carefully. Working relationships with that pantry and its affiliated organizations is very difficult
Okay.
across the region.
Okay.
And it comes right down to that one organization.
Yeah. Okay, you're a lot of clear.
Okay, so then the funding arms aren't necessarily, it's not rooted in the number of people. Your, your produce comes in for free, that's a commitment from Good Shepherd when you're able to partner with them. Then there are the nicer behams, that, that private funding or fundraising or whatnot, that will help bring those items in to then have those extras there, so when you're in a relationship with Good Shepherd, there's nothing stopping somebody from Rockland coming to Norwood to say, I want food, we would provide that to them. But they are not privy to the things that we have paid for.
I just didn't want to hurt them by doing what we do.
Right, yeah, I just, they're looking to expand if they were gonna do that. And for an estimated six months worth of service this current year, they're looking for about twenty thousand dollars in support of us.
So I have a question, on the Skowhegan food pantry, like, is that a different location than, I know that there's, it started as like this kids backpack program at the high school, and now I know that Chelsea has gotten, she's got a significant brand now, there's an entire garage that's next to where the technical center is, so brought to notion
That's a completely separate program, the Skowhegan food pantry is funded wholly by the tax dollars of Skowhegan. And so they really, really, really limit the number of people that can go there, and their schedule is terrible, throw up only four hours a week. They will do me a favor on a case-by-case basis if there's an access issue, where somebody can or can't get to a place in a bit of time.
So I know that that specific location, that's that garage next, that's right in the high school parking lot, I know that you can get in there and get access anytime during the school hours, and I'm fairly sure that it's open to everybody now at this Everybody now at this point. I can check back with Chelsea, but the grant that she just received was to. Do more to the building, add refrigeration. They're looking to expand that pretty significantly. That as far as like transportation getting there, that could be another viable option for something that we. Look into helping fund with that where it's already kind of upstart and going. It's right at the school. I mean. There's, even if we maybe like partner up with like the school bus, really, they come back through, like stuff can be brought. I mean. Feel like that's something that's getting bigger and bigger and the amount of donations that they're getting. And now this grant that they've got. That's right there at the high school, which is pretty accessible, I think, for a lot of people even in Norwalk. That could be something that we could look at too, as far as partnering up with that. I know Chelsea's done a fantastic job with that location and it's only getting bigger.
Thank you for that. Uh, anything else from the public?
I, I can tell you and say that. Through my experience of working for the school district, it's not possible to use um, the school transportation. To shuttle things. That, that's just, you know, that's a whole stick you would get for lots of things.
Oh, the K V campus? I mean, that must go by the high school, I'm guessing, right? That's.
They, I, I don't know what their route is now, but you have to think about food safety and about how long. If that bus is going all the way to Canaan and making forty-three stops, which they frequently do, before they actually got back even here. You know, food might be on that bus for sixteen hours. You don't know who's touched it, especially when you're talking about.
No, I just mean like if people wanna ride there, can they get, can they use that to get a ride to the food pantry? I've never, I don't know, understand the, I don't know the whole. They can't get a ride.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, just saying like walkability, but like.
It's our subject, but the K V cat bus comes to town twice a day. It comes in the morning and picks you up and it doesn't come back until the evening. It's if you wanna go to the commercials of Walmart and all that.
Yeah. And I know that right now it doesn't go into the school parking lot, so.
Good.
I know that's not helping.
Uh, anything else from the public? The board? Seeing none, we'll close the public here. Uh, thank you everyone for attending. Uh, definitely appreciate that. And moving forward, uh, right, we'll move to the group and pool for minutes of October day. Thank you.
I move that we approve.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? See none, a little favor. That's everybody. Members' reports, we'll start with this.
I do. Um, I've actually had people reach out. One thing. Is access to be able to talk to us as individuals. Obviously, we don't wanna be getting out our phone numbers, but. If we have email addresses, I'm wondering if that's something that can be put on like the website if we have like a. If people wanna not go through the town, if they wanna reach out to a specific select board member, um, if we wanna put our email address away for them to contact so that. If there's something that maybe they don't wanna talk to you about, but they maybe have a question for, like just accessibility to us for questions. That was one thing that I, I got asked about. Um, another thing was, uh, just a clarification on how town jobs go out to bid. There was something about, about a specific contractor that seems to be getting a lot of, um. The, the jobs in the town. I mean, how are we doing that? Are we putting everything out to a bid a certain way with everything or is it a certain dollar amount? Like, how are we?
Depends on the job necessarily. Lately, it's been deferred because of, we, we defer back because of time.
Okay.
You try to get three price quotes on everything. That's the goal, is trying to get three price quotes.
Okay.
Sometimes it came.
So that is like.
Gonna give you a price.
So that is the thing, I, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we can always say like, we didn't just give it to somebody. It's, there was a time constraint or something like that. Right, okay.
It's a great one, or a time constraint or availability, where we look at that.
Yeah.
Well, this, I mean, sometimes it does, does just go with people. Right, I mean.
Yeah.
Small stuff like our cleaning service, that adds up to something that should probably be bid out every year. There's one local cleaning service that needs to have the contract for forever, so we bid them. We haven't bid them in a couple of years, have we? No. But the price hasn't changed, so the price hasn't changed. We don't rebid it.
Is that what our, kind of like our steadfast is of something like with our current contractor doesn't change in price, we don't put out to bid, but if it does change in price, we do put it out to bid?
Deem to be what's in the best interest of the town.
Yeah.
How do we deem that though? What's like?
One of us, one of us on your agenda tonight, number fifteen.
Okay.
Summer property management contract. If you're not happy with the price of the service.
Okay.
We can discuss that.
Yep, and I've had three people ask me about the light again, cause it's, it's, it's getting, uh.
It's starting changing.
Yeah, we have no way to push, nothing we can.
Know, they call, uh, they can go on, um. DOT website, contact the region, region three is in Wilton, and you can send them a, it's a form, name, email address, phone number, and. You put whatever, write whatever you want about them. Like, they, they have metrics.
Okay.
For responding to those. It's the most effective toolism for me to.
We should like start bringing these in handy.
So I mean, I'm happy to post that link on.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
So yeah, I might not be so thrilled about it. Uh, but.
I think that way people at least feel like they're getting a voice in it and get something can be done, like even if it only moves a needle, like.
Yeah.
It's more than it was yesterday. Um, I feel like there's something else and I'm just totally brain farting on it right now. Um. TV. That's all I can remember for right now.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything. Also, we'll move right on to the town board report. Uh, we had kindergarten classes this morning. This was the first time that we've had kindergarten. They just finished their units on community, so. Uh, there were about forty-five of them that came through today. We helped them get into the post office fire station in the bank. Uh, it was very well received by them. Uh, a little, not what I'm used to, but anyway, we had fun nonetheless. Uh, the mobile home of forty-eight Benjamin Drive, that was given away last week to the owner, Shav Scott Higgin. Uh, he is now the owner of record and holds all that liability, so that's wonderful. Uh, the. Magnetized Maine Conference, which is in Waterville tomorrow, it's all about making Maine a more attractive place to work, keeping people here, the boomerang. If they've left, bring them back. And if they're here, how do we keep them here? Uh, so I'm gonna be going to that tomorrow. It's a good professional development opportunity there. Your absentee ballots are available now, so you can vote your regular business hours here through November third. The heat pump grant at the airport was approved and those are scheduled to be installed the first week of October, on November. Uh, and then the last meeting was asked about the annual savings on heat pump at efficiency may estimate six hundred and ten dollars per unit savings on an annual basis. Uh, when you're offsetting heating wall with that. So I can't talk about current fluctuations. I was just, uh, available on their website there. Uh, the planning board has reviewed, completed its review of proposed commercial solar regulations that are. Looking to be integrated into the existing cycling review ordinance. They've also voted to make a recommendation on solar related fees. That for the sake of scheduling and the length of tonight's meeting, uh, will appear on your next regular agenda. I know lots of planning board members here to talk with you about that. Been a lot of discussion in public about that. And there is still a section of the website on the homepage that reached the solar regulation, uh, and all of that information. Uh, Nicholson Yard is expected to begin the project at the town square this week, um, and will be completed before the end of the month. The lawn very likely won't grow just because of seasonality, but it will get reseeded in the spring, uh, under the proposal, uh, if necessary. The open house is this weekend at the fire station from two to five on Saturday, uh, to recognize Chief Jones and his retirement, love, light refreshment serve. Uh, thank you again to our partners, Scallygins Savings, High Family Dealerships and Waste Management, uh, for covering that for us. Uh, thank you to the Jones family for their assistance in helping this happen. Um, and then also if you are unable to attend and you'd like a card, a greeting, a letter, a gift or anything else, we can receive that here at the town office. Um, in person or by mail and we will make sure that it gets there. Uh, we have a proposed turnaround leasement at the end of Ward Hill Road at the town line. That's been drafted, presented to the owners for signing, to actually clear a turnaround issue there for winter road maintenance. Uh, that would be the Daniels. We owe thanks to Alvin Famous on the drive. The two sets of bleachers for the rec fields, those have been on order, put on order. It was a three foot bleachers, twenty-one foot length. And we were able to avoid the cages, so that was, uh, done. And those are gonna be freighted. The sewer commission met on Monday to review rates. There was. Just about a ten percent gap in terms of what they were gonna operate at for loss this year, uh, ineffective nine percent raise on rates to be proposed. The stub fee was your odd number. They said round that to an even fifty-five dollars on the stub fee. Consumption was eight point one cents per cubic foot. That's up to nine cents round. And then the flat fee was one forty-six and change. That's a hundred and fifty dollars for the flat fee now. Uh, that will go into effect February first of twenty twenty-three, which will allow us communication up to all users by regular bill as opposed to having to send out a special mail. That will be phased in on a monthly basis depending upon what year in. Uh, next Saturday, the twenty-ninth, we have a trunk retreat. Uh, the PTG's doing it with, could be childcare. We're gonna have. Uh, and it's all been donated. We're gonna have the backhoe loader there. We're gonna have skeleton, skeleton crew is the costume and we're gonna fill the. Lower with candy there for the kids. Uh, and then next Thursday, they don't know it yet, but from one to two, we're gonna be closed. Sharon will be here for twenty years. On the thirtieth, I think, of October. It's, we're in close to lunch that day, uh, so staff can have lunch with her. On the third, we're open late. That's the seven o'clock night for voter registration, the last day before, the last Thursday before the election. Um, that's also the last day of absentee without special circumstance. And then also on that day from nine to six, there'll be a Medicare health agent. Here, no cost to us, but she'll be here to, uh, help folks in the public fill out their paperwork if needed and to take care of all the advanced customization and whatnot. Yeah, alright, thank you.
I remembered the other thing.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, it was, obviously we cannot open up comments on Facebook, but there was, um, concerns, maybe if we had like, when we do, um. You know, questions from like the, what do we call it?
Public comments.
There we go. If they could type in questions on Facebook and we could address that during the meeting, if that was something where people who can't show up. Obviously, we can't open up because that would just become a total like disaster.
I know, I review what's, it's typed on there. I would say, I know, I believe you do as well.
Yes.
I tend to address everything. Yeah. The other thing is that people are welcome to email me or anybody. It's more effective if it's me, because up until about five thirty, I can answer those questions and then I can report.
Alright.
Um, and if not, I will piggyback and send them a message or an email or whatnot, but I don't ever have anything that pops up here.
Okay.
It's Facebook, I ask unless it's.
Yeah, well, I just didn't know if like we made it so that there was, you know, you had until six twenty to putting questions and at six thirty, we'd look through the questions and answer whatever we could or something like that. That would give people the ability who aren't here in person to be able to.
So it's public comment, a public question and answer.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
I just figured what God asked me.
Okay, no, we're not. Uh, okay, uh, discussion action on October nineteenth, general warrant number.
Twenty, I move that we approve general warrant number twenty and the amount of seven, oh geez, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. What is, is the school?
No. My treasure. Motion and second. Second. Uh, any further discussion? I see, uh. Nexus is on the twentys, two very. So we missed a check on the last part of the contract and then this is their regular check for them. So this is two payments for the contract.
What did Landy Construction do for us?
Well, we bought an initial load of sand for the, load, we, load all the day of sand for them. And that's our first load of salt, yes.
The important stuff was a fourteen thousand?
Cost or? No, we just. I think we only saw a seventy-five cent increase in salt this year, only. Oh, yeah. Okay, anything else? Just for the folks that aren't present in the room, there's a five hundred and sixty thousand, five seventy-seven bill going to Somerset County Treasurer. That's our annual payment due thirty-first of October for county tax and one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to the school. So yes, it's seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, but that's.
That's stuttered.
Uh, okay, uh, so you go for the discussion, all those in favor? And that's thirty-one.
That's the first time it's been unanimous.
Yeah.
For the schools.
Alright, uh, discussion action on October nineteenth, airport warrant number ten.
I move that we approve airport warrant number ten and the amount of seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second. Is it motion and second? Uh, any further discussion on that?
Um, the only thing is the heat pumps on that, we are gonna be reimbursed for that and ninety.
That's a full amount. The net price for us is gonna be just, it'll be forty-eight, twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Okay.
Right, yeah. We hold that instead of asking the contractor.
Okay, just wanna make sure that wasn't like our final sum up.
Okay, well, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody. Alright, okay, discussion action on October nineteenth, sewer.
I move that we approve the sewer sentiment amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Uh, right, uh, public comment? Uh, anything from the both? About anything, please. Carter, go ahead.
The square.
Yes.
You tell. Almost why you go from a fence to twenty thousand dollars? What? What's going on down there? Like, is it going to be a parking lot? Is it just going to be an area for a Christmas tree? What is this twenty thousand dollars that needs to be spent now?
Actually, I think almost all of it, but I'll let Richard fire us through that. So this was a TIP committee project. The TIP committee was considering, in fact, the TIP committee was considering boulders. They considered retaining walls.
For what reason?
To create, uh, delineation, green delineation between the rail trail that's gonna be coming through and the park itself. To keep motorized vehicles out of that green space, if you will.
Okay.
So by putting that now retaining wall style in the back, it'll gray it up. It'll allow us to bring the picnic tables into that confined space. And it will force vehicles coming off to stay down the wall necessarily.
Stay down, move where?
That retain wall, that will, is gonna be established in the back of that property.
On the other side of the rail trail?
No, so if, if you're looking at the town square and you've got the, shake the Milster Nutrition Building here. There's a foundation that comes out and we're gonna match that off in those sideways. So it'll necessarily be a parking area for ATVs or snowmobiles down in the back. Instead of allowing them to move up to the curb in the sidewalk. It will kind of, it will keep it back there. So it'll concentrate the motorized vehicles there while preserving and actually enhancing that green space. We'll, we'll pull the picnic tables up and around and into that area. It's gonna have boulders dotted on the outside to restrict people from getting in there.
And then the back area, you had talked about a dock.
So we have an extra dock anyway. So if we were just able to brush out a little bit along the string. Just to put a eight foot section of dock that we had hanging around, kinda adds just a little extra dimension at minimal cost.
Walking path down to there?
Yes, it's already apartment back.
Already in there.
Yeah.
In that twenty thousand dollars.
It's twenty-two, right?
Yeah, because we, they're gonna take care of the foundation of the car.
When the scope of the job changed and became retaining wall, why didn't we put that out to bid?
Time sensitive, finding contractors that can get that out. And then you want sixty days to build the package, bring it to the board, put it out to bid. And everybody wanted it done yesterday. And it was about the time sensitive video coming through. Get it done before winter.
Right. And I've gotten, sorry. Parking on Main Street or our parking spots that have been used for employees to, that are. At businesses. You guys are wanting to take that away. I, I don't get the concept of the. Just because you've got a rail trail in a new business, you're gonna take the parking away from everybody else that uses those parking spaces? Are we going to give them a place to park that's reasonable for their locations?
Yeah, so it's, we're prelim, preliminarily, the target would be to place two hour parking restriction on all spaces downtown. So that you're not going into the restaurant or into a store or into a lotter office and taking a parking all day. There are folks that think that that's a great idea and there are folks that think we should have a twenty minute parking restriction on there, except for the lots that benefit them. That's what I've heard feedback candidly. The folks that don't like the two hour are afraid that people will take up places in front of their real estate. But then they want to be able to take up places in front of other folks' real estates. So in real estate, so we're not looking at it equitably from everybody's perspective. Everybody's looking at it from the. The selfish perspective, the self-preservation. The discussion that we had at the last meeting was the possibility of, let's say, a permit system at the Wells Street parking lot, which is a furthest remove, but still there. Main Street and Wall Street where employees, citizens would be able to have X number of permits to cover their employees. We also understand that there would be need to address ADA concerns, um, for those that have disability. That's not just employees, that's, you know, residents, customers, patrons, uh, that that needs to be addressed as as well. So nothing has been formalized, aside from order and signs to be placed for two hour in parking lots. The ordinance, the ordinance has not been touched and we have not discussed curbside parking.
So if I'm in a, in our new restaurant, we can spend two hours and thirty minutes when it's busy, it's new, it's opening. You're not going to tow my car?
Correct.
Okay.
The idea behind the signs is that, uh, it's a respect thing. You're not gonna sit and abuse it. Uh, and honestly, we have a large number of spots downtown that are taken up by residents, multiple vehicles. Or we've got parking racks, we know all the way everybody. Or we've got parking racks, we know everybody has to get to work, but we have a very limited number of parking spots downtown. So they could use like the Health Center or Russo Store, places that have larger lots. Uh, and good surveillance, it's open to public visibility, uh, that's important. And when we go out for twelve hours a day, we, we understand everybody works and needs a paycheck, but we're hoping that they'll make the responsible decision to find something that works for everybody.
Okay, uh, anything else on public comment? Alright, we'll see you none. Uh, moving forward, uh, so, uh, presentation from Matthew Libby.
Heard how much money the town has, so I figured. There's some bad news on. So luckily, it's still there. As I'm sure a lot of people know at this point, it's been a very tough market year across the board. So it's easy in the sense that really everything has gone down for the year, so it doesn't matter what you invested in, everything's negative. So what I thought I'd do is kind of talk at a high level where the markets are, where the economy is. Go in and out on both sides of that. We'll talk about the account specifically, performance, how that kind of relates to the overall markets. Um, and then I'm certainly open to any questions that anyone has, any concerns. So kind of from a high level, the market's been with a lot of uncertainty this year. So whether that be inflation, um, the Federal Reserve raising interest rates to help curb inflation, whether or not they're behind the eight ball on that or ahead of it, there's a lot of different uncertainties there. And it really doesn't matter which market you're looking at. Anytime there is things that aren't set in stone, the markets tend to react very negatively to that. So that's what we've seen this year. Again, equity markets have been very volatile and that's across the world. So we're seeing basically overall economic slowing throughout the world. So the US is starting to go into that. And kind of the topic now is, you know, when do we see a recession? Do we see it this year? Have we already seen it? Do we see that in the next two, three years? Um, and I'll kind of answer what we think on that side of things. So following up some of the bad things going on, we do still have a lot of good economic data coming out. So tax rates are still low, fiscal stimulus is slowing, which for the market tends to be a good thing long term. As we all know, labor market is very, very tight. So from our point of view, it's very hard to go into a very deep, difficult recession without employment where it is today. Again, that could very well tick up some, but in our minds, we don't believe that that's going to tick up greatly. Beyond there, the housing market, we believe is slowing, but we still think it's on a very good footing. So we certainly don't see the two thousand eight, two thousand nine happening again, especially from the housing market. Corporate earnings are still really good. So even with inflation, corporations have been able to really pass on the cost to consumers. And on the flip side of that, the consumer still is very strong. So they're still in a better position than they were pre-COVID. Some of that stimulus money, some of it inherently is just more savings. So for the US economy specifically, the consumer is a very, very big part of that. For all those reasons, that's why we don't necessarily believe that a very deep recession is coming. There is talk that maybe we went through a recession at the beginning of this year. Technically, kind of the behind, you know, backside of the napkin definition of a recession is two quarters of GDP going negative, which we did have. But when you look at the true, true definition of what a recession is, there's about six or seven different parameters that have to be met to say that we're truly in a recession. And we didn't really take any of those boxes. So we do feel like we will go into recession at some point, maybe towards the end of next year. We don't believe that we see it this year. But with that said, recessions are a very normal part of the business cycle. Um, and it's a very normal part of market cycle as well. So from our point of view, you know, like I said, we certainly don't see a recession like two thousand eight, two thousand nine. You know, we do have a lot of recessions that are very mild and we believe that that's kind of where we're going, you know, going into next year in twenty twenty-four. So I think, you know, especially during these times, we all immediately think back to oh eight, oh nine as being, that's what a recession was. But that truly was one of the worst recessions that we've ever had. We've had twelve that were very different from that and very mild. And that's kind of where we see things now. So again, taking some of the good and the bad, we're in an okay place right now. We're not in a great place right now. So logically, we do feel like the economy is going to be slowing further. And at that point, it just comes down to what the Federal Reserve decides to do. So a lot of analysts believe the Federal Reserve was behind the eight ball on raising interest rates. Essentially, this time last year, they still thought that inflation was going to fade pretty easily, which a lot of us kind of thought it wouldn't and you've seen that it really hasn't. So inflation has been much stickier than they really believed. So with that, what they've done is they've raised interest rates very high and very quick. So they've essentially raised interest rates from zero to three and a half in a matter of four months. So the past, the quickest that it's taken to get to that point has taken about a year and a half. So in comparison, that shows how quickly this has jumped. So with that, the markets acted very negatively to it. Um, all markets, including the stock market and the fixed income market, have both really tanked because of how quickly that's happened. So in kind of comparison, what the account looks like, if you guys look at the first page of this report here. So this has a lot of different information. I'll kind of fit some pieces of it. So the account from start to yesterday is down about thirteen percent for the year. So to compare to that, the US market, the S and P five hundred is down about twenty-two percent. The NASDAQ, which is more of a tech sector, um, market is down about thirty-two percent. International markets as a whole are down about twenty-eight percent. And the bond market is down about fifteen percent. So sometimes during these times, we take little wins. This is where we're going to take a little win. Where even when the fixed income market is down fifteen to sixteen percent, I'm very pleased to see that we're down thirteen percent. Again, I know that doesn't feel good. I totally understand that side of it. But what that shows is that we really are beating the benchmark on this. So we're picking appropriate funds. We have a good mix of what we're investing in. And the idea is that especially with this, we're really looking at this being sort of an endowment, so kind of having a perpetual life. So the idea is that if the plan for the next five, ten, fifty years, we truly believe in, well, if it doesn't work for the first ten months, it doesn't mean that we want to just jump ship and completely, you know, go away from that. The idea is if we have a plan that is meant to go through these market cycles, it doesn't make any sense to deviate from that plan when things go to, you know, goes sour. You know, we want to kind of push through that. So again, that's kind of how the account compares to different areas of the market. So again, pleased with on the downside. I think we're doing a pretty good job on, you know, what that looks like. Because the, the idea is even when markets are difficult like this, the, you know, for down thirteen percent compared to twenty percent, naturally, to get back to even, we have a lot less to go. You know, for down twenty percent, it's going to take a lot more to get back there and a lot more time than it is at this point. So, you know, what we're shooting for is hitting kind of singles and doubles even in down markets. And that's kind of, you know, what we're looking at here. So in terms of kind of how this is still allocated, you know, we all met last year, we decided on a very conservative strategy, which is still is. So it's about seventy percent fixed income and about thirty percent in the stock market. So of that fixed income, like I said before, the fixed income market is down fifteen percent this year. And to kind of put that into context, the last sixty years, the fixed income market has had four negative years total. So fifty-six years, the fixed income has been positive. Before this, the worst drawdown ever for fixed income was four and a half percent and this year it's fifteen. So that shows how quickly the interest rates went up. They weren't ready for that. The fixed income market also acts a lot like the stock market in terms of it tends to what I call overshoot in either direction. So it tends to go too far negative when it really shouldn't and it tends to go too far positive when it probably should. So especially on the fixed income side, we feel like we're in that ballpark now, where essentially all these bonds have kind of priced in the Federal Reserve going to four and a half to five percent on the interest rates, which is already priced in. So for a lot of this, we feel like a lot of that pain, especially on the fixed income side, is behind us. And on top of that, when bond prices go down, their interest rates go up. So when we were investing in a lot of these things, last year, the interest rates were two to three percent on a lot of these bonds and now they're five to seven percent. So over the next two, three, four years, that steady income that should be coming into. So again, nothing in this world is guaranteed, so I say that caveat as well. So from the fixed income side, again, we've made some slight changes. So from an overall standpoint, especially with a potential recession on the horizon, again, even if it's mild, what we want to do is position appropriately for that. So what we're looking at for the next six to twelve months is focusing on high quality across the board. So high quality companies that we believe, you know, no matter what the recession looks like, should do well and high quality bonds as well. So high credit rating, um, much shorter term debt as well. So we don't necessarily want to be buying bonds that are thirty years long at this point. We want to shorten that to five or six years. So again, controlling all the things that we can control, you know, putting the town, especially with this account, in the best position to do well, again, relatively speaking, no matter what the markets look like for the next three, five or ten years. So, you know, I think that's the biggest thing where, again, this is a very long-term investment. So where we've had a poor ten months, and this isn't just CYA for myself. But truly, you know, a lot of these investments, especially on the stock side, if we like them in January, an example is Amazon. So if there's a piece of Amazon in here and we liked it in January for the next three, five, ten years, well, today it's down thirty-five, thirty-six percent. We like it that much more. And that's kind of how this goes. So, you know, from a bigger picture, everything that we're investing in, we do want to hold ideally for a long time. You know, buying that quality and with this being a very conservative portfolio, that's what we're focusing on. So again, I think, I don't think we're completely through the woods yet down to the market. But I'll say that with one hundred percent transparency. So we very well could be sitting here next year with a little bit lower of a balance. But with that said, and with the interest rates rising, with that dividends, you know, coming in and being re-invested, we're able to buy more shares of everything that we own in the long term, that should pay off. So it's very easy when we get into these kind of market scenarios to feel like this is never going to end. You know, you're going to pull your air belt, it's never going to get better. The most dangerous words in this industry are that we haven't seen this before. Because I would argue everything, to a certain extent, we've seen before and the markets continue to chug along over a long periods of time. So, you know, again, this first page has kind of the performance, but then also kind of what the asset mixes. I did put some kind of higher level, just general investing education beyond that. So if you look to page three, this kind of goes to my point of with this being a truly longer-term investment, the most important thing is to focus on that longer-term investment time horizon. So what it shows is that one-year chart. Basically, it says if you just invested in stocks, you could potentially be down forty percent or up forty-seven percent. If you just invested in a fifty-fifty portfolio, you could potentially be down eight percent or up forty-three percent. And if you just invested in bonds or fixed income, that negative fifteen number is the one that I've been talking about. So that's this year, your probability on a one-year time is that your returns can be negative fifteen to negative thirty-three. But as you see, as you go to a five-year rolling period and a ten-year rolling period, for the most part, all of those returns are positive. So again, that's where it kind of pays to zoom out. These go back to nineteen fifty. So if you look at kind of a fifty-fifty portfolio, which is a little bit more aggressive than what we have here, but if you're invested in that fifty-fifty portfolio over the last seventy-one years, there essentially isn't a five-year rolling period where you had negative returns. So again, that's where it's important to kind of zoom out, look at the bigger picture. So again, we're not investing this money for the next twelve months. We're investing this money potentially for the next hundred years. Depending on, again, I won't hear that, but hopefully someone else might come out any year and do that. So I think the big key. I think the big key tidbits here are being patient, typically, with us there. Focusing, especially now on quality, makes a lot of sense. Um, so we're certainly not buying companies that have any earnings, don't have any cash, don't have any assets, you know, we're focusing on companies that truly, no matter what the market scenarios are, they should do okay through those, you know, just kind of taking a more cautious stance, I think is, you know, the biggest focus for us at this point. And again, you know, continuing to be as diversified as possible. So within this account, there's probably exposure to six to seven thousand individual companies, US and international. And then beyond there, there's about five thousand different individual bonds within this. So again, it's portions of all those bonds, but the exposure is across the board. So lately, I've been getting the question a lot in terms of, well, my biggest fear is that this goes to. So especially with the way that we invest this money, I say this kind of jokingly, but it is true. We're investing in essentially the entire US economy, most international economies, on both the stock side and the bond side. So for this to go to zero, we wouldn't really have an economy. Essentially, everything's on bankrupt. So I say that kind of laughing, but it is kind of true, you know. At that point, we wouldn't really be worried about this because they'll be wondering where our food's going to come from, whatever it may be. So again, you know, not super pleased with the results, obviously. I would love to come back here and say that we're up two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. That would be my goal. But we're dealing with the hands that we're, you know, being dealt with right now. And again, I think we're positioned very appropriately for the next six, twelve, eighteen months to, again, endure whatever that does look like. The hardest part, I also have people that say, well, if you know the next six to twelve months is going to be difficult, why don't we just get out and we'll get back in when things feel better? So the problem with doing that is that the market always turns around before things feel better. So even me with this crystal ball that everyone thinks I have, it doesn't tell me when that's going to happen. And no one that is in this for a living can accurately tell you when the market's going to hit the bottom. The most recent example of that is COVID. So March, basically, January first till March twenty-third, twenty-twenty, the market went down thirty-three percent. So the market magically on March twenty-third found the bottom. So for that person that wanted to get out and get back in when things felt better, well, we all remember March twenty-third, we were all just starting to get home. So things certainly didn't feel better on March twenty-third. But the market is truly forward-looking, so it looks over the next six, twelve, eighteen months even further. And it kind of builds that in. So back in that example, the market turned around and shot straight up. So if you hadn't got in, basically by the beginning of April, you lost a lot of, you know, that game. So that's where we're firm believers of sometimes it is difficult to ride through this. But long-term, you're not going to regret riding through this. Long-term, you will regret trying to get out and get back. So, okay, wish I had better news at this point, but this is where we are. So certainly, if there's any questions, concerns.
I don't see Bitcoin in any of this.
Yeah.
That's being serious though. Just want to make sure that's not his joking face. I'm pretty sure he's serious.
How do we, uh, how often do we contribute to this?
We don't, we put a lot on it.
Yes. So wouldn't it, who asked you, if it's down thirty percent or whatever, invest more money?
Yes. I would say so. If there is more coffers. If Jeff's been over to a couple of checks from Wisconsin.
Much my can, if you see it.
Yes.
I'm all in your time. Um, so yeah, long-term, this is a fantastic time. And the example that Dylan was saying is just right. You know, if we like a certain thing in January, we like it a lot better now. Especially where a lot of that is longer-term money, you know, that's what I would say is if it's anything that hadn't been touched in the next six to twelve months, we certainly don't want it. And again, we might not be at the bottom now, but we're a lot closer than we were back in January.
Unless, yeah, typically, when you start hitting record highs, that's when you start slowly removing and then you start hitting lows, you just keep feeding it back. And I just, would, now would be a time to feed it.
No, I certainly agree.
I think personally, with personal finances, that's definitely what we're doing. But I think with town money, this is the first time we've ever tried this. I think we need to just kind of. It's like two and a half million. We've lost that. I feel like, yes, if this was my two and a half million dollars, sure, but this is taxpayer money that we put out here and we never have done this before. This is very new to us. It's less than a year that we've decided to do this as a town with taxpayer money. So I feel like. Give it a smidge.
So I agree and I disagree. Well, it's not my choice.
Yeah.
But this is for, um, so the alternative is still, even if this isn't cash, your bank account would say two and a half million, but on top of that. But on top of that, inflation, that's real low, it's still less. So it's the same with housing, all that kind of stuff, like, the difference is you see a statement for this all the time. So that's where it's a little more difficult, or otherwise, you know, we'd necessarily eat that, that fuck, so.
Any other question?
Yeah, where is this choice company from?
So my office is right in Lawville on KMD.
Are you a fiduciary advisor?
Yes.
I have advisors. I haven't heard of you in a day, I just want to make sure that they would deal with fiduciary.
Yeah, so I'm a, I'm a certified financial planner, which what comes with that is that every interaction I have, I have to work as a fiduciary. So I can't. So essentially, the difference is if you're not a fiduciary, legally, you still should be doing what's in the best interest of the client. But there isn't such a standard that we're held to, to do so. So an example of that is that everything with this is fee-based. So I get paid as a percentage of what the account is versus selling certain products that have commissions with that. So the nice part is that we can pick whatever makes sense for the tax. It's not, I'm not incentivized for buying XYZ versus ABC. It's truly long-term, you know, making this grow and picking what makes sense for that, you know, again, for the next five, 10, 15 years and so on, so. And I also grew up right up the road too, so.
The only other thing that I wanted to say was, you're smart, if you pay yourself first, and it will grow, you will make more money. Pay yourself first. It does work.
No, just thank you, I know also I need to come in and toss the awesome money around.
Thanks for not losing us as much money as we could have.
Honestly, thirteen percent. You know, everybody else, a lot, a lot of people have lost a lot more than thirteen percent.
I like to do these meetings with good, bad, good.
It's a compliment sandwich of like, stuff finance.
Yeah, if that's going on, something recent, right? So, yeah. Again, I think the thing for us is always to be as transparent as possible. So certainly, if questions come up after this, feel free to get ahold of me. And again, if you guys are hearing from me enough, not enough. Good, all good, okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, presentation from Silvavis on Consolidated Communications.
You know, it's set me up for a good, good one. Obviously, that's, this is.
Yeah, I was like, hmm.
Yeah, like it's.
Yeah, but I'll take the opportunity because Skip is here to let him know that I had been trying to follow the charter and spectral. And I just haven't been able to get an answer back from the construction team to my point of contact. But they're supposed to be up in the field progressively working on the detail areas. This here, the Consolidated Communications, is a part of the project, if you remember, that we helped invest with the county, that thirty-two hundred dollars for the county plan and see what we can cooperate with over town lines and whatnot. Uh, the intention of Consolidated is to build out almost, if not all of the rest of Norwood with fiber. So I anxiously look forward to the time.
If it worked with the ditch, then we're, you know.
She was supposed to be here tonight to give us a presentation.
Did we not get it? Like, did we know she wasn't coming or?
No. And you know, I'll have the agenda on Friday when I have to see.
Blasphemous. Are you Sarah? Nope.
Okay.
No.
Okay, yeah, discussion action on confirmation of fire chief point.
Do I have to move that we do so?
So I would first like to begin by extending thanks to the selection committee. I mean, I selected the selection committee, but nonetheless, Chief Jones, Deputy Chief Pino and Jim Lyman, Vice Chair of your Board, spent a substantial amount of time reviewing applications, meeting candidates, meeting candidates again, to try to make the decisions that I am now offering to you today. Each one of them brought their own perspective to the interviews. And I think all of the time that we spent was balanced and productive for the benefit of the town. Involving multiple stakeholders improves who's gonna be represented and I think gives the best possible candidate to be selected. So thank you, gentlemen, for your time to select the next chief. But it's been forty-seven years since we've been in this position. So it is bittersweet, but it's one chapter closing and another one beginning new. And we would be remiss if we didn't recognize our current chief, who's gonna help us out for a little bit longer through transition. But Dave Jones has done a lot. And in town meeting, we recounted the long history that you've had of service to the town and for fifty years that tone's gone off. Except for today, you did kind of roll over next day.
Good for you.
It's not two o'clock in the morning, so I hope this thing rests up. But he has responded and with him has come his family. We joked earlier today, Jeff's years of service have been as long as he's been alive. And so we're thankful for that. And so, but we're here today for a new chief for us here from Mercer. And his shoes aren't gonna be easily filled or filled at all, but we're gonna do our best to try to. So tonight, I offer to you my appointment for confirmation of David Savage to be the next Fire Chief here in Norwood. He has a broad base of municipal experience, a substantial background in emergency services. For ten years, he's been active in the town of Norwood's Fire and Rescue Department. He served on police forces at Oakland, Madison and Scoville. He has certifications in crash reconstruction, holds an active EMT license and has his firefighter one and two certifications. He's most recently served as code enforcement officer and plumbing inspector here, as you might know, and also full-time in Oakland. If confirmed, he'll continue his work on behalf of the town of Norwood as code enforcement officer. In addition to the role of Fire Chief, this will expand his local access uniquely and his availability, providing residents, taxpayers and staff the greater level of access and enhanced availability that everybody's grown up to want and desire. I'm confident in his experience and his abilities and believe him to be the best individual to fill this position. With unanimous agreement of our selection committee, I'm pleased to present to the select board David Savage as the next Fire Chief for the town of Norwood.
Do we clap?
Uh, I will defer to the department to comment before motions made, if they have any.
That's you guys.
We did announce the nomination to the firefighters this afternoon, as well received and encouraging. We are working on transition formalizing that, but in the next week or two, that will take place. So thankful for Dave's willingness to stay on and help us through. I know we're a few weeks over, but we appreciate all that. Well, this would be a two-part motion, the first would be to confirm, if that's your pleasure. The second, we need to discuss wage.
And will we confirm David Savage as the new Fire Chief?
So that's the next question. And the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, is everyone? All right, no wage piece. Yeah, so uniquely, you, the select board have the authority to set the wage for the Fire Chief. This is gonna be a wage that would be carried across to code enforcement. But extending offer to him to complete a review of comparable salaries and asking that you set the wage at thirty-three dollars and twenty cents an hour.
That's what we had discussed.
Correct.
Before.
Yes.
All right, I'll make the motion.
There's a motion, second, any further discussion on that?
Are you cool with that?
Seeing none, all in favor, and that's you in this as well. Excellent, well, congratulations. All right, moving forward, special action on appointments to the planning board. We have one day to sit on the planning board and Charles Farren has been attending on a regular basis with special interest on solar. But we asked him the other day if he was willing to serve on the planning board for March, and he said he would. Fill out a simple application, and here we are with a request to appoint Charles Farren to the planning board effective today for town meeting twenty twenty-three. Come on.
Why is everyone looking at me?
I make the motion that we expect Charles Farren to the planning board.
I'll second. That happened, like, as long as he's my uncle or something.
Discussion action on two thousand twenty-three summer property maintenance contract, every little option. So this is a proposal from Nickerson Yard Bays, they've been our long, long factor now, I think this is our third year, I believe. They are proposing a flat contract versus permanent for next year, that's forty-five thousand dollars on the annual, no changes to services. They say the working relationship is good with the town and they would like to keep it that way. Sure pleasure, can we accept a proposed contract price of forty-five thousand for twenty twenty-three moment season?
So moved.
And what was it, it was same last year? Yeah, what? Motion second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Other business? There should be a motion to add signing quickly.
Second.
Any further discussion? So everybody? This is a motion to sign quickly, the release of the town's tax by a property located at one eighty, Big River, identified as tax man. Twenty-four lot, forty-four dash four to Warren Brothers Construction.
So moved.
Now, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's everybody. Nice. Glad that did you recall for them. And then the next request would be a motion to add a special action on playground swings purchased to the agenda.
So moved.
This is a carriage forward item, the purchase has been approved, but then we wanted to see an accessible version and adaptive swing options. So we have currently six swings that are down in there, some of them are bucket seats for infants and then we have regular belts. And then the possibility of adding in this adaptive chair, obviously more expensive, our price is at a seven ninety-nine, it was the most affordable one that looked like it would serve multiples. They go as high as twenty-five hundred dollars. And that's not for wheelchairs, that's for simpler style chairs. It includes a hardware, it doesn't change.
How unbreakable is that? I'm just wondering, like, that looks, I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, I wanna hop in that, that looks like fun time. It's, it's pretty like.
So from what I can see on the line behind us is a common seller item, so probably the highest in that period, like three or two. And that was a hundred bucks.
All right, but like the swing, its parts and everything was holding up to wear and tear for, okay.
Are those gonna go in before winter or are we thinking? So that they can go in when cameras go in and.
Right, okay. I think we need to have that, I mean.
Yeah, it's an expensive seat, just.
But, you know. Even if it's only one or two people that ever use it, if they get to actually use a swing and I think that that's worth it.
Yes, I do too, no, I agree. Welcome to approve the purchase of an adaptive swing set chain and belt seats from ADA State of Play presented.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Is everybody? Okay, the board has nothing else from the business. No, okay. Right, executive session.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I was unfortunately absent from the public comment piece.
Yeah.
Can I add a minute?
Please, two actually.
Two, it's up to order, so I, I mean.
I've been out of work for two, so it's fine.
As Richard said, the selection committee was unanimous and in support of Chief, Chief Electa, I'm not sure what you call it, Savage, then get elected, I suppose. So I'm not sure what the right terminology is, but soon to be chief. And I just want to put my support behind that, I think, very good candidate, as, as we have multiple very good candidates. I do not mean to disparage any of them, but it's unanimous, I fully support them and would hope we're.
Okay. Right, we take a discussion to discuss the town manager's performance. I know you would all want to stay, but you have to go.
Thank you for.
Second.
I'll poke it.
Hi everybody.
And right so I will take a motion.
I will, okay, do we do the three or just the two? Okay, I will make a motion that we give Richard into the pres蒞权. I'll second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Say none, all in favor. Is everybody? Any questions on that?
May I have you come out of executive session?
Yeah, would they ever ask either one to adjourn? Motion and a...
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Say none, all in favor, the black folks.